Before us is the Executive Committee Report. Alderman Shakur.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Executive Committee Report be adopted.
Second.
I've been moved and seconded to adopt the report. Alderman Shakur.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Item 116664, this is a direct referral communication from the city attorney wishing to convene in closed sessions to discuss with the Executive Committee's strategy in respect to litigation in which the city of Racine is or is likely to become involved, specifically Beaufort versus Dickert versus Racine, and more specifically addressing Mayor Dickert's right to indemnification pursuant to Section 895.46 Wisconsin statutes. Our recommendation is that authorize the city of Racine Attorney's Office to provide for legal defense for John Dickert as mayor of the city of Racine in the Racine County Circuit Court, case number 11-CV-1078. Direct the Racine City Attorney's Office to respond to a third-party complaint in such case by admitting that John Dickert was carrying out his duties as mayor of the city of Racine and acting within the scope of his employment for the city of Racine, and direct the Racine City Attorney's Office to respond to the third-party complaint in such case by admitting that John Dickert and the mayor of the city of Racine is entitled to full indemnification, including the full cost of his defense from the city of Racine. Physical note, funds will be allocated for judgment and claims, account number 101.160.5910.
Thank you. Alderman Shakur is the maker of the motion. It's certainly your right to debate first on it. However, what I would like to do is have Deputy City Attorney Scott Letney present. He has a presentation he put together on this to explain it. It is a relatively complicated matter, and I would ask him to address the council and give us the explanation before we enter into formal debate. It'll also give us a time to then ask technical questions of staff before we start debating as well, so everybody's clear exactly what we're talking about, if that's all right with everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. All right, the case we're talking about is Beaufort versus Dickert, and I think this all can be explained throughout this, so if you have questions, they may be answered along the way in my presentation here. The allegation, the underlying case is that Mayor Dickert slandered former Racine employee William Beaufort in a WRJN radio interview, and allegedly, the allegedly slanderous statement is, "We found somebody embezzling in the city of Racine, and I fired him." It is pretty simple. And as maybe you know, Mr. Beaufort was never mentioned specifically in this interview in any way. Where the case is right now, Beaufort versus Dickert versus Racine, is the city must answer the third-party complaint. Just sort of a brief background, the way a lawsuit is initiated is with a document called a complaint, big C complaint, and the party upon which it is served, typically the defendant, must respond to that complaint, and that document that you respond with is called an answer, big A, answer. And in the answer, it's required to respond to each and every, what's called an allegation, a statement in the complaint. And, you know, for instance, the first statement is always, the plaintiff has named this person and they live at this address. Well, obviously, you admit that's true, but as you get farther on, there's the things they claim you did or didn't do. And those, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to answer, but you either admit or deny. That's technically what happens. So in this third-party complaint, the mayor is seeking confirmation of his right to indemnification under the statutes, and I'll talk about the statutes as we go on here. And again, the city must admit or deny statements in the third-party complaint. So the issues that are on the agenda to be addressed tonight is whether or not to formally authorize the city Attorney's Office to provide for the legal defense for John Dickert as mayor of the city, and to direct the city Attorney's Office to admit or deny in the answer that John Dickert was carrying out his duties as the mayor of the city of Racine and acting within the scope of his employment at the time that the allegedly slanderous statement was made, and also admit or deny that as mayor, John Dickert is entitled to full indemnification, including cost of his defense from the city of Racine. And these are statutory, statutory language that I'll talk about here. Why are we talking about this? Well, and I think it's a fair question. As a matter of routine, the city Attorney's Office typically makes decision about responding to lawsuits involving the city and city employees. You know, we get sued for a slip and fall or because, you know, a snowplow driver crashes into a car or something, we typically make that decision. However, this is clearly not a routine case, and the personal versus official capacity issue was not something that we anticipated when this action was originally served. And frankly, the issue was not brought up, it wasn't addressed, it wasn't, there's nothing in the complaint from William Beaufort that says it's in his personal capacity, it doesn't say, one way or the other. It appeared, and I think reasonably it appeared, that the mayor was being sued for actions taken within the scope of his employment, therefore, as the city Attorney's Office routinely does, we responded and hired somebody to defend the mayor. And then this issue came up, so we needed to talk about it. So that's one reason why we're here. And I want to be really clear on this, because I have heard from various places that this has already been decided by a court. The fact is, there has been no decision by a court on this issue. There was a motion where this issue was discussed, but the court did not decide. This is taken against him personally, or this is taken against him in his official capacity. The motion was a motion to dismiss, the attorneys in the room will understand, it was akin to a motion to dismiss for failure to state a claim. When you file a motion to dismiss for failure to state a claim, what you're saying is, even if everything in the complaint is true, the plaintiff has no case, and if the court agrees, the court dismisses. There has, there's no response by the defendant at that time, the defendant doesn't say, "I agree" or "disagree" that I did this. All the court has is the complaint, the initial document. And in that hearing, what the judge said is, "The only document before me as the judge is the complaint. The complaint doesn't say anywhere that he's the mayor of the city of Racine." It doesn't say he's not, it doesn't say he is, it just doesn't address it. So the court said, "Since I, as the court, do not have any evidence on this issue, I cannot make a decision whether or not he was acting personally or professionally." So there is no court decision on this issue. So it has not been decided by a court, let's be very clear on that. We have to also formally respond to the third-party complaint seeking confirmation of indemnification. Again, typically speaking, the city Attorney's Office decides. Somebody slips and falls, they claim it was negligence, and the city Attorney's Office denies, "It wasn't, we weren't negligent, the sidewalk was fine," whatever the case may be. And I'm not being flippant about it, but that's the kind of case that we would do that on. This is a case where our concern was, because the issue is, this issue of indemnification, that it would have been inappropriate for the city's Attorney's Office to simply make this decision without counsel direction. So that's why we're bringing this to the council, because the issue came up. As I said, it never occurred to us, and also the issue came up and we thought we had to talk to the council about it. All right. There's a couple of statutes that I want to talk about. One is 62.115, which is obviously in the chapter on cities. Common counsel of any city may authorize the city attorney to defend actions brought against any officer growing out of any acts done in the course of employment. So the council can authorize that. That's authorize having the city attorney do it, which is a different issue than paying for the official's defense. So that's one thing that's here. And the second issue is a municipality under 895.461A is required to pay the attorney's fees and costs, and this is, I emphasize the word "required," any attorney's fees and costs and any judgment entered in any action brought against any municipal officer either in his or her official capacity. So if the lawsuit said William Beaufort versus Mayor John Dickert, well, that would be an easy case. Or for actions taken within the scope of his or her duties. Well, the complaint doesn't say William Beaufort versus Mayor John Dickert, it says William Beaufort versus John Dickert. So the issue is whether the actions alleged were taken within the scope of his or her duties. So that's really the issue here. The law is, and there's a number of cases on this, and you've received some memos and emails from me over the past weeks on these issues, but it's absolute liability. This is not something the city can decide, "We don't care, we're not going to do it." If these are acts committed while carrying out his or her duties, the mayor's duties, then the city has absolute liability, absolutely required to, there's no option. And some cases that relate to government employees in Wisconsin, in resolving the scope of employment questions, consideration must be given to whether the employee was motivated, at least in part, by a purpose to serve his or her employee. And in that case, Olson versus Connolly, there's one other quote that I didn't, and that's not a direct quote, but that's what the case says. One other issue the court said that I didn't put up on a slide, but I want to mention is, even if, the court said, "Even if the predominant motive of the official or the employee is his or her own personal interest, if," and this is a quote, "if to any appreciable extent the motivation is to serve the employer, then the determination is that the person is serving the employer or the municipality." And that actually is taken from, again, from the attorneys in the room, restatement on torts, that was quoted in that case. Again, the relevant law is the scope of the duties, when you're looking at what scope of duties are, includes those acts that are so closely connected with what the person is employed to do, that they are methods of carrying out the objectives of the employment. So again, I think, as you're looking at this, the two things that you really need to look at to decide whether it was in the scope of duties is whether there was a motivation in any part, in any way, to serve the city, and whether this is any method of carrying out the objectives of the employment. Now, factual issues. In Mr. Beaufort's complaint, he states he was formerly employed by the city of Racine. He states that he worked in the neighborhood stabilization program, and he states that John Dickert knew that William Beaufort worked for the city in the NSP program. Again, he doesn't say Mayor John Dickert, he just says John Dickert. Also in the complaint, he says that John Dickert made an allegedly slanderous statement about him, and he specifically says regarding his city of Racine employment. And that statement was, again, "We found somebody embezzling in the city of Racine, and I fired him." And I guess I would point out that all the statements that I pulled out of the complaint talk about Mr. Beaufort's employment with the city of Racine specifically. In the interview, it was part of a series of pre-primary interviews, and I believe all three of the primary candidates were interviewed. There were discussions about campaign matters, certainly, and there were also discussions about city matters. Now, I, we prepared a transcript of the interview, which I emailed to everybody. I don't know that Cheval had time to read it, but I'm going to break out over the next several slides, based upon time in the interview, what was discussed in the interview, and I've separated it between campaign issues and city issues. The times that I broken it out were just natural times where the discussions switched topics. So they're all between two to four minutes, I think one of them is about five minutes. The interview itself was around 22 or 23 minutes long. So, in the first two minutes and 19 seconds, the opening statement is a campaign-specific issue, we continue talking about the mayoral campaign in the city of Racine, and the host's opening statement was, in the studio, is Mayor John Dickert. There were discussions of election dates, and then mention of the mayor's campaign website, then a discussion of the length of time the mayor was in office, and some discussion of the mayor's efforts, or the progress of efforts to make Racine a top-10 city. In the next, from 2:19 to 5:48, there were actually no campaign-specific issues discussed. There was discussion about job creation efforts, Delta Hawk Summit Packaging, SurePack, and Treasures Media were specifically mentioned. A caller called in and commented on the mayor being a hands-on mayor and called him a salesman for Racine. From 5:48 to 8:23, again, there were no campaign-specific issues discussed. There was discussion on the form of financing for Delta Hawk, and the mayor talked about some of the revenue sharing, I think from water funds or something like that there. The mayor discussed about his insistence of using what he called clawback provisions in public financing contracts. There was some discussion about use of taxpayer money for this kind of thing. And then from 8:23, then the host brought up the different candidates' positions on the need for a city administrator, and there was a discussion on that, as to what different candidates believed about that. And then the mayor started discussing the job performed by our city administrator. A caller called in thanking the mayor for his efforts at promoting the city and attracting business. And then from 11:49 to 17:21, there was a discussion about attack ads from something called CRG. The mayor talked about a clean campaign pledge, Chicago style campaign politics, the city administrator's qualifications, again, which was part of campaign discussion, and then the mayor's relationship to the city administrator. Then the discussion turned to the neighborhood stabilization program and the LED program, and it was during that discussion that this allegedly slanderous statement was made. And then a caller called in thanking the mayor, he actually talked for a while about the mayor going out and cutting weeds himself and dealing with some flood issues. And then the same caller talked about some snow removal issues at 17th Street between Taylor and Memorial, and the mayor said specifically, "I'll look into that," or "I'll take care of it," something like that. And then the caller talked to the mayor a little about snow removal budgeting, and offered some suggestions about how citizens might be able to assist in the budgeting for snow removal. And then the final portion, the discussion was what separates the mayor from his opponents on budget issues, and then he turned the discussion to the city's efforts on responsible budgeting, and then talked about the snow plowing. This was about 10 or 11 days after the big snowfall, which I'm sure you'll all remember. And then a caller called in and asked about Delta Hawk's effect on other existing Racine businesses, and the mayor talked about some other existing businesses that might work in concert with Delta Hawk. And then there was some discussion, recycling carts and the money and solid waste and budgeting, and how much the city is making or paying for those kinds of things. And then there was a wrap-up and a final mention of the campaign website and election dates. So it was, what, 2138 was the entire interview. Now, there is a process in a litigation called discovery. Discovery is efforts taken by either party to try to learn about the other side's case. And in some cases, you might say, "Why is it you think I've harmed you?" Or, "Why is it you think the sidewalk was not constructed properly, causing you to fall?" There's depositions, which everybody kind of understands, it's testimony, but there's also something called an interrogatory. An interrogatory is a question one party asks the other. And the mayor's attorney sent interrogatories to Mr. Beaufort, and the question that I want to give you a response to is, "State all the facts that you," and I'm quoting here, that's why "you" and "your" are capitalized, because "you" specifically means Mr. Beaufort, "your" means Mr. Beaufort. "State all the facts that you maintain support your contention in paragraph 15 of the complaint," is Mr. Beaufort's complaint, "that the statement harmed Mr. Beaufort's reputation, so as to lower his estimation of the community." And again, that's a quote right from the complaint. Now, Mr. Beaufort responded to these interrogatories as he's required to, swearing on oath that they were true. And his response was, "It doesn't do much for anyone's reputation when you have a public official referring to you in your previous capacity as a city employee, telling you that you were embezzling from your employer." This is Mr. Beaufort's words, talking about Mayor Dickert as a public official, and then talking about him in his capacity as a city employee, and again, sworn on oath by Mr. Beaufort. The third-party complaint, the mayor seeking, again, a ruling that he was acting in an official capacity at the time the statement was made. He's seeking confirmation of his right to indemnification that I discussed under the statute. So the issues, and this is what the Executive Committee voted on, the issue, first one, is, shall the city of Racine provide legal defense for and indemnify Mayor Dickert for the allegations contained in the complaint? And second is, how shall the city respond to the third-party complaint, specifically whether Mayor Dickert was acting within the scope of his duties at the time of his statement? And the Executive Committee's answer to the first one was, yes, indemnify, and second, that yes, the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties at the time of his statement. So that's the recommendation the Executive Committee made to council. And that's what I have. Any questions for me?
Alderman Mosel.
Yes, Mr. Letney. Did Mr. Beaufort either file a liability claim information form, the generic one we have, or a citizen claim form also, or?
No, he didn't file, didn't proceed under the Notice of Claim Statute 89380 at all. And that frankly was the initial issue at the first motion to dismiss. The motion to dismiss, as I said, was kind of a failure to state a claim, but the specific issue was failure to comply with Notice of Claim Statute. And Mr. Beaufort's attorney admitted that, yes, in fact, if the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties, they would have had to have filed a, under the Notice of Claim Statute, and the case would be dismissed. But it was at that moment that they first said, "We're claiming he didn't, wasn't acting in the scope of his duties." So therefore, they said 89380 doesn't apply, and that's why the judge says, "I don't have any information before me that I can touch, because it's just a complaint." So the judge didn't make a decision on that issue, he just denied that motion to dismiss because he didn't have the information before him.
Alderman Karpalion Becker.
I need some clarification. You did have a slide there that mentioned, and there you then stated that a judge will then decide, and then we'll, it doesn't matter, then the state, the last one that you just brought up will be followed. So he will decide whether he was acting in a personal capacity or in official capacity? Are you asking us to do that?
Well, it's sort of both. The city must respond to this complaint, and as I talked about at the beginning, a complaint is filed. In this case, the mayor filed a complaint against the city, saying, "City, I believe I am entitled to indemnification pursuant to the statute." And we, indemnification means, and it's the word the statute uses, is paying for his legal defense, and were there to be any judgment against him, to pay the judgment against him. So it's similar, and again, if, you know, a snowplow driver crashes into a car, and there's judgment against him, the city pays that, because they were acting within the scope of the employment. So there's really kind of a two-part answer to your question. One is, we have to answer the complaint. We have to say, "Yes, we admit the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties at the time," or "No, we deny the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties at the time." We are required to respond to that complaint. So we have to say, "We admit or deny." "We," the city, okay? And of course, the attorneys respond on your behalf. Ultimately, no matter what the city says, I believe this will be an issue for a judge to determine, because Mr. Beaufort certainly does not want, and let me, let me just back up. I don't speak for Mr. Beaufort, I don't speak for Mr. Beaufort's attorney, okay? This is just my assessment of the case. Mr. Beaufort would not want the mayor to have been acting within the scope of his duties. He would not want that finding, because if that finding was made, as Mr. Beaufort's attorney said in open court, the case will get dismissed because they didn't follow the Notice of Claim Statute, which is mandatory. You may not file a lawsuit against a municipality or a municipal official unless the Notice of Claim Statute has been followed. They didn't do that, so the case would get dismissed. Whether they'd refile at some point in the future, I don't know, but the case would get dismissed at that, at this point, okay? So I believe that what will happen is, from the mayor's side, and frankly, I think this is where the city would get involved to some degree, because I think it's also to the benefit of the city for there to be determination that the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties, because the case gets dismissed. There's a, there's a common defense there. So, the mayor would argue, "I was being the mayor, I was talking about city things, I was motivated in some part by my duties as mayor when I was doing this interview, and therefore, I was acting within the scope of the duties." Mr. Beaufort will say, "No, no, no, you were a candidate, the only thing you were doing was campaigning. So even if you talked about taking care of the snow plowing problem, that was you, the candidate, talking about the snow plowing problem, okay?" And again, I'm not trying to make Mr. Beaufort's argument for him, but I believe that's the kind of argument that we get. So, the two-part answer is, we have to answer the complaint, one way or the other, we have to do that. Ultimately, I believe a judge or a jury, potentially, will decide whether or not the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties. And whatever that decision, it could theoretically get appealed to an appellate court, as you know, that can happen. So, so even if the city were to say, "We admit the mayor was acting within the scope of his duties," if a court said, "No, he wasn't," then the city would not have to pay any theoretical judgment against him, and I guess the city could proceed against him to recover any attorney's fees. If the city were to deny that he was acting within the scope of his duties, but the court said he was acting within the scope of his duties, then by statute, the city must pay. There's no option, no question about it.
So our vote is irrelevant?
No, it's not. It may, I understand what you're saying. To some degree, it may be irrelevant as to the bottom-line court decision, but we still have to respond to the complaint. We must say, "We admit or deny." And while typically the city Attorney's Office would just do this, you can see why this case, we wanted to bring the council to get your direction. So.
Alderman Marcus.
Thank you. If I can change places for a few moments.
Yes, you can.
Where, ask the question.
Just ask the question.
I want to post, I need to give some background to my questions.
That's bad, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the information that we've been given, in my opinion, while mostly true, is not entirely true.
Sit down so we can hear you.
Can't hear you. But.
I need the powerpoint slides.
Why don't you allow him to use it?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. There is a provision that a member can't read from a book or a paper unless, if a member objects, unless given leave of the assembly. That would be the only thing I can, off the top of my head, I could think of a reason to object. There's a provision in Robert's Rules that a member cannot read from a paper or a book or the electronic version thereof, I would guess, if another member objects, and then we would have, except by leave of the assembly, which would mean we'd vote on it. That's the only grounds for the objection that Alderman Shakur is raising that I could think of. Yes, sir.
I have another reason why I'm saying that.
Okay.
In the, in what, interrogatory?
Interrogatory.
Okay. Eric Marcus is listed three times, on number four, question number seven, and number eight.
And I have not seen any of that.
All right, hold on a second.
And I don't want to see it.
Okay.
I'm not party to this. I, I would like the opportunity to present an opposing point of view, which the Executive Committee did not see, which this council has not seen, which is completely relevant to the decision as to whether we should vote one way or the other.
Hold on, hold on one second. You want to present an opposing legal argument?
I want to present an argument in rebuttal to Attorney Letney's comments. I don't believe that Mr. Letney was, I believe Mr. Letney represented a viewpoint, however, I want to rebut Mr. Letney's views.
And you can't do that simply by speaking, is what you're saying?
You need the PowerPoint.
I need the PowerPoint, because it's got the slides on it.
Okay. I'm sorry, this is getting a little horny, one, one thing at a time, gentlemen. There would be the objection to referring to, I guess, a display, which we could deal with. There's, as far as the objection of where... There's, as far as the objection of where Mr., or Alderman Marcus is in the interrogatories or not, I don't know. I mean, if there were an ethical conflict, I'm not saying there is, it would, even with our new ordinance, it would essentially revolve around financial implications, of which I, there are none. So, we're a little bit stuck with that regard. Alderman Wozneski, did you have a point of order, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that, I actually concur with the Alderman of the eighth. I do believe that there is an ethical consideration here. He references interrogatory number eight. Identify how you first learned that Dickert made the statement, including but not limited to, the person who I informed you and any communication you had with said person and the statement. The answer is, Eric Marcus called Jim Ruble, who called Mr. Bealafeld. The beginning, the absolute beginning of this whole case, outside of what the mayor said on the radio, started with Eric Marcus. I do not think it's appropriate for him, being a part of this case, to argue either side of it. I think he has to step away from it.
I'm not arguing the case, I'm arguing the law. And, and not only that, I'm not a party to this interrogatory. I didn't sign it.
Hold on, hold on.
Alderman Fair.
City Attorney, City Attorney Rob Weber, you know, as I was arguing my Dickert incident, remember, gave me Robert's Rules of Orders and some questions and stuff, as it stated to Robert's Rules of Order. And I believe that this is similar. He should be able to, he should be able to discuss this, but maybe the gray area would be not to vote on it, like, as you, you know.
Quite frankly.
Different?
No.
Talk here, Mike.
I believe they should be given some leeway to discuss this.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that being said, before this gets too out of hand, gentlemen and ladies, essentially, there's two courses of action here, I guess, as a group, that there seems to be some objection bubbling up. One would be an objection to, I said, as I said, reading from essentially outside materials, which is something in Roberts. Another one would be a motion to limit debate, which would not just, we can't just limit debate on Alderman Marcus, it would limit debate on everybody. But we can, right now, we have rules that say everybody can speak twice to an issue, and they're, beyond that, they're relatively vague. It is the body's purview, I guess, to, we can limit debate if we choose on any particular item, or extend the limits of debate. That would require a motion with some sort of limits proposed, and then a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass. So, I'm not sure where we're at with this, but Alderman Shields?
Mr. Chairman, we, we don't know how long he's going to speak, what he's going to speak about. I have sit here in this chamber, listened to other Aldermen speak for 20 or 30 minutes on the issue, and we had no complaint about that. So, why do we have a complaint now?
Because a member's raising objection, which she certainly has a right to do.
And, and I have a right to discuss why we, why we're raising those objections now, when we sit here and listen to other Aldermen.
You don't actually have anything before us yet, so.
But not the other Alderman ain't doing PowerPoints.
Well, if they, if, they could if they wanted to, but the point was, you know, whether you sit at your desk and speak for half an hour and refer to stuff, he just pointing that stuff out. I think we should at least see what he's got to say.
Alderman Kaplan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak to the point of order. Is Alderman Marcus going to speak as an Alderman or as an attorney?
He's speaking as an Alderman.
Okay.
And a former candidate.
Alderman Mosel?
Yes, I don't think this is the appropriate place for a rebuttal from Alderman Marcus. That would be in the discussion phase after a motion was made. We're getting a presentation now from the city attorney that we can ask questions of, and it doesn't involve Alderman Marcus, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, we do have a motion before us, which is to adopt this, and I had asked us if we could hold off on debate until we got the presentation, and then we had a few questions. Now, we're, essentially, the conundrum here is that Alderman Marcus's question requires some great level of explanation. So, we're in a little bit of a.
I'm willing to limit my time.
Okay, as the, the chair, what I'm going to do is just put this to a vote. All those in favor of allowing the PowerPoint presentation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. Going to ask for a roll call vote.
I, I would like to make a statement before the vote. You know, I think it is, it is surprising to me that Aldermen are unwilling to see a different point. The fact is that Attorney Letney represented the city's opinion, and by the way, there's a conflict of interest potential there. You have an employee of the city representing the city against the mayor of the same city he works for. I think that it is worthwhile seeing, I think I've got 10 slides, and I can get through it pretty quickly, to see what other options we have. Some of the options that Attorney Letney has given us are not full and complete options. So, how can we vote without knowing what all the facts are and what all of our alternatives are? And I, you know, I think, I think if this body's going to start limiting Aldermen to, to, to speak, then that's, that's going to set a precedent that's going to carry a long way forward.
On the motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I object to the PowerPoint presentation, because the Alderman is making an assumption before this meeting even takes place. And he's also assuming, now that we have had a presentation from the Assistant City Attorney regarding the city's legal obligation in considering this, is that, the assumption is that we are not listening to the city attorney with an open mind and making decisions on our own, and I object to that. I, I think that what the Alderman of the Second District is attempting to do is putting the city at further risk, and therefore, I object.
I mentioned it to the president. On the motion.
At the beginning of the meeting, but not weeks before. If you could just.
Keep order.
Yes, please.
You got a gavel there.
This is what we're going to do. No, 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 I don't need that. This is, this is what we're going to do. We have an objection to essentially, I'm bound by Roberts Rules here. I've considered the ethical quandary potentially, and I don't really see one. In terms of our rules of ethics as a body, I'm not an expert on the state aspects of it, but I just don't see anything, because there's no financial interest here. People can make phone calls and do whatever, and it, if, as long as there's no financial interest that can be pointed out, I don't see a problem there. But the objection from the body seems to be with regard to presenting this now. So, in Roberts Rules, there is an objection to reading from materials. So, that, that's what basically I'm putting to a vote, is do we want to allow permission to do that? So, this is how I'll put the question, is in order, if you want to vote aye to grant permission to, to have Alderman Marcus essentially read from outside materials, and a no vote would disallow that. So, all those in.
Question. Does that mean that no Aldermen will be permitted going forward to read from written materials at their desk, which includes notes, which includes any other documents?
Point of order.
Hold on, we're in.
I had my hand up first. How could, how could he speak, and he's not recognized first?
Because I guess I got recognized first.
That's what I'm asking him, I'm not talking to you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman. Perhaps.
Chill, chill, you guys.
Perhaps depending on a little PowerPoint, Alderman.
Gentlemen.
You're out of order. Let's respect each other, please.
You know what? What we are in right now is we're in recess. Thank you.